Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Dave.
I think we're all here. Your meeting of Windsor Heights City Council is called to order. Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Michael Lefredo.
Here.
Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa.
Here.
Okay, folks. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Invisible, justice for all. Thank you. Move for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public for on topics of city business other than what's on the agenda. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Please identify yourself, your address. See anything there, Travis?
I don't. Does Chief see anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Hearing nothing. Move on to the next item. Motion to approve the consent item.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Susan Skerries. Or and Teresa Harns, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Well, you're really in person tonight, aren't you?
I am, and thank you for bringing that up. I would just, I'm trying to figure out technology which I am not skilled at. And so I thought this was going to be my background, like, and my other thing, but now it's the background of this picture, so someday I'll figure.
Background, Teresa.
Hey, maybe I can just move out of the way, and there you go.
There we go.
Is it a glasper shot, Teresa?
It is not. That's a Ben Easter photo.
Oh, very nice. Very nice.
Next item is consideration, the second reading of ordinance twenty dash zero eight. An ordinance amending the chapter one fifty-six dash dot oh four of the code of ordinances to remove the requirements for rental property signage to be provided solely by the city and setting the size and placement limitations on private rental signage. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item would be consideration of waiving the third and final reading of that same ordinance. To remove the requirements for solely provided rental property signage. Is there a motion to waive the third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty dash one fifteen. Resolution approving the submittal of the annual street financial report to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Motion to approve.
Second, first, motion to approve.
I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty dash one sixteen. Resolution approving the Windsor Heights master parks plan. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Dave, is this, is this to receive and file?
You are correct, Mr. Lefredo, is to receive and file. The title in the agenda is a little bit different than the title of the resolution.
So I just want to make sure that all that we're doing is taking this and filing it. We're not saying this is what we're going to do, this is not what we're going to do, this is just basically, we're accepting this and saying thank you to Bolton Mink for providing the the details.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So having, or with that being said, what will be the next steps with this?
Dennis Dalton. Would you like to address that question?
Yeah. So the results from this plan, I mean, it's they'll be used to help guide, I guess, capital planning for the future in the park.
Do we have a timeline, or if you could give some more, or can somebody can speak to what, you know, do we, we're just going to take it and file it for the moment? Can you give some sense of how we're going to work that into our future planning and a timeframe for that? I just want to, I don't like just having a report and filing it away. I want to know how we spent money on this park plan, and I want to know how, how were we going to make sure we incorporated and can keep these ideas moving forward, and how do we incorporate them, I guess?
Please, I think the CIP needs to be extended anyway. I don't think there's been any action taken on that for a while. So that could be a part of that. And I'm particularly curious about what is it, the park behind the City Hall, the Lions Park? Was it, they have direct access to the park prior years ago? Off the street from the street?
I don't think there's been direct, I mean, there's the parking lot that comes up on, by the City Hall, the back parking lot there, that's how it's accessed, and it's always kind of been an access issue from that perspective.
Well. The City Hall hasn't been there as long as the park has.
The park used to be on university. You used to be able to come in off of university and had some different playground equipment there, and then that, I think it's basically where the building is that runs from sixty-sixth to maybe sixty-fourth, sixty-fifth street. That's where it used to be. That's where Lions Park used to be, and then it got moved. We moved a gazebo and moved it behind the City Hall Public Safety Building.
Thanks, Susan. That's, that's good for me to know, because I, I don't know that history, and that's important for me, because it's kind of closed in now. And it's hard to use it, frankly. So I'm just curious about that from a historical standpoint, and so I appreciate that information.
Mike, there's also concrete steps or whatever that come in from the back of the Public Safety Building also.
Okay, it's, it's kind of a secret park right now. You know, to people freshly coming into the city. You know, so.
It's not as traveled as much as it used to be. That's correct.
Well, yeah, and there's a lot of, as it mentions in the report, a lot of over, over growth and, and it's pretty rough back there. So, yeah, just, that's from my information. If others were informed by that, good for that you, because I was. And Dave, thank you for that one.
Any further discussion on received and filed?
I, I would like to have some time, I want, I want to understand how it's going to, what's the plan for progressing for it. My question didn't get answered.
You're right, it didn't. Sorry, Teresa. I would imagine that, like Dalton said, it'll be used for capital planning, of which we will have SIP and stuff going forward, but since Dennis has just arrived, we have not had enough time to really try and get goals and whatever all lined up and have a discussion with council on all those.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Master plans are typically your base concept document that this demonstrates your needs and your community's prioritization of need of park desires. So after this is received and filed, we will use as a staff to build capital projects that fit those desires and those needs of the community. For example, the master plan has identified a, a need for park facilities in the northeast quadrant of the community, so staff will be looking to build projects in the future through the CIP and the budgeting process that would fulfill those needs, and we will refer back to the master plan when we're coming up with these projects. But as a caveat, anything that's, just because it is identified in the master plan doesn't mean that the city's going to pursue that within the next two to five years. Obviously, funding constraints are going to play a big role, but also when we take a look at what our needs are and what resources we will have to actually maintain a facility like that, those will all play an ingredient in the final recipe, so to speak. And then my intention going forward is to update the CIP every year with the budget process, so we may not change much in the CIP from year to year, but we definitely want the council to take a look at, are these projects that are in the CIP still current, should they be removed and replaced with something else? And I think it's important that we do a regular review of those on an annual basis. I hope they.
I agree with that.
So we do have Jim Harbaugh with Bolton Mink here to give a presentation on the park plan. If that's right, Mr. Burgess.
That's fine, go ahead, Jim. Thank you. I didn't know you were on board for that purpose, but please go ahead.
Give him screen share permissions, please.
I didn't hear what you said, Dalton.
Jim's going to have to be able to share his screen to show his PowerPoint presentation here.
I just made him a co-host, so he should have those abilities.
Can everybody see that now?
Not yet.
Let's try it one more time. Sorry about that.
Uh-huh. Now we can. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Just a quick introduction. I'm Jim Harbaugh, Principal Landscape Architect with Bolton and Mink. I'm filling in for Casey Byers tonight, who was leading the effort with this master plan. He had a family funeral to attend tonight, so I apologize for the, the quick change here. Just want to go through this real quickly. You've covered some of the things already that we, we talked through your discussion. Let's see if I can figure out how to advance my slides here. There we go. So the objective really is this, to examine existing park facilities and evaluate the need for making improvements, whether it be to the existing parks or for new parks and recreation within the community. And with limited park acres for the community and three city parks, it's important that the inventory and the analysis of things be considered for neighboring parks and facilities outside of the community as well, since we're in the middle of a metro area. You know, pivotal to this overall plan was the incorporation of public input to guide the process on this, so it wasn't us just designing in a vacuum, but really getting information from the community on their priorities. The overriding purpose of the plan is takes and expected deliverables was, is a guide. It's a master plan. It's not a set in stone element that must be followed, but it should be a guiding document for the years to come in order to upgrade your park facilities or even put in new park facilities at the same time. It's really used to inform the budgeting and planning of future improvements, and that's really what that, that driving force is of a master plan. So a little bit about the, the plan itself, the process really started looking at where, where local and nearby parks are in relation to the community members they're serving. These are a couple maps out of the master plan, looking at five-minute and ten-minute walking radiuses of local parks. The left is local parks within Windsor Heights itself, and then the one on the right is parks within the, the neighboring communities and how that serves Windsor Heights as an ancillary item. And, and I think it's, it's pretty clear on the left that the northern side of Windsor Heights isn't served as well on a local level, parks-wise, when you're looking and considering just the park space within the community itself. So we went through a, a lot of surveys here. We received community survey input from over two hundred community members, which is a really good showing. We really want to get an idea of what was, you know, who was using the park facilities, what the recreation trends are, and what we'd like to see improved in, in terms of the existing parks out there as well. Among community members, common themes kind of arose and centered around request for a few things. One was a splash pad. Another was increased events in Colby Park. Updating the play equipment in Colby Park. Better usage and exposure of Lions Park. I think that goes back to your discussion of how to get there, and it's kind of a hidden park right now. And maintenance and upkeep of, of current facilities. When asked what the priority was, investment over the next five years, community members indicated new park amenities, addressing stormwater management in Colby Park, making it a more resilient park itself in terms of stormwater, and the addition of outdoor fitness equipment in that area as well. Similarly, once staff and council were asked the same question, stormwater management, the Colby Park play equipment and accessibility were top priorities for the park system. So the following information included in the report is recommendations and prioritizations for the existing parks out there. So for each specific park, recommendations are indicated with a description and a cost associated with it to help guide your CIP decisions in the coming years. And really, we identify the proposed improvements briefly here, but these are the prioritizations set forth from the community members and council as well. So we looked at Colby Park. Three of the, the main things on this page, updating the existing playground equipment, resurfacing of the tennis courts and, and the potential restrapping of that to add other amenities such as pickleball or basketball at the same time. The installation of a splash pad in this area to serve Colby Park and the, the interest around it. Looking at redoing the parking lot bio cell out there to make it function better and, and be more easily maintained for the long haul. B-cycle station within the park to allow rental of bicycles within the, within the community and along the trail system. And then accessibility in, in general, ADA accessibility for both this park but across the park system as well. And that would be something that would be integrated within each project as well. It wouldn't necessarily be a standalone item. Before I move along to the next park, are there any questions from, from council on some of the prioritizations for Colby Park? Okay. Moving on to Lions Park, I think some of the discussion already is really increasing the amenities and functional use of that space. Potentially providing dedicated parking for Lions Park as well. And then we finding signage, making sure the community knows the parks there and making sure they understand what amenities are there as well. And then the third existing park we looked at is the dog park, and addressing some things here is parking concerns for the park. Updating park equipment, including some of the obstacles and existing amenities within the park itself. Replacing fencing as part of that with a more robust system through there. And then they'll look at the programming side of things on this, whether it be a, a membership program for the park itself. Knowing that this is the only dog park in the metro that does, that does not require a membership. So that poses some risk for liability and, and, and cost associated with it as well. Those are some of the priorities that we, we look at. So overall, the community members value outdoor recreation amenities, and the recommendations included in this plan represent those, those they're pretty well-informed ideas coming from the community as a whole, and are representative of the feedback that we've received. The intent of the recommendations is to seek, you know, to improve current facilities, but also improve park usage, getting more people to the parks is, is an important thing, and lessening the dependency on neighborhooding, neighboring jurisdictions, the communities that are around you. In the case of Colby Park, especially, careful consideration really should be made when considering accessibility and stormwater improvements as part of the park. We know that the creek's a flooding issue. We know that's not going to go away overnight, and anything that we implement within the park, especially in the floodway, needs to be resilient for stormwater, so that's something that we integrate in, in any improvements as part of the park. So that's it. If you have any questions, feel free to, to ask them.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and stop caring here and turn it back over.
Any further discussion by council? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike, Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes, thank you.
Next item is consideration of pay request number two, twenty twenty PCC patching project. Motion to approve.
Removed.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Questions?
We just get a quick update.
Dalton.
This is Justin. I can give a quick, quick update.
That would be fine, sure. Thank you.
This pay estimate is really for the bridge patching approach work. They have a few minor things to finish up. There's just the bridge patch. There's a small patch. They have to do some other things. One thing they have to do is sandblast those guardrails. So it might not look like anything's be done, but they might do that at night just to, to help keep like the dust down and whatnot, so once that is all completed, then they're going to hop to that south side there by, from the railroad tracks down to YMCA, so that's kind of where we're standing. We're hoping to get that bridge portion up here at the end of the week.
So, Justin, that's the final piece to the patching project?
Yeah, the final piece is from the railroad tracks to the YMCA, so.
Okay.
And Justin, you think that that will maybe start next week? Is that what, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I want, just, is that?
That's what they're, they're shooting for, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Justin? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number five, one university.
Hope to approve.
Second.
Any comments or updates on that, Justin?
Yep, they got the main line paved on Friday. They're hoping they're shoot for paving, pouring the rest of the hand pour in there at Seventieth and they're kind of tied into the east side tomorrow. And we're hoping to open the back up to two-way traffic by the end of the week.
Thank you.
That'll be appreciated.
Any further discussion or questions?
Justin's still on target, just to finish that section ideally before or by the time there, for, for this working construction season.
Yeah, the plan is here, I think at the end of the month, they're planning on shooting to the other side, the south side, starting there at Dairy Queen. We're going, they're going to switch to two B instead of two A. So look for, at the end of the month, all the traffic might be pushed to that north side of the roadway, and then they'll start on the south side.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of change order number one on the North Walnut Creek bank stabilization. Motion to approve.
Removed.
Any discussion? Hey, Justin, I noticed that was a decrease of seven hundred dollars.
Yep, so this change order is just finalizing kind of everything, just kind of zeroing out the quantities. I think Dalton actually did some de, his own traffic control out there, so they didn't put it up, so we took that off. Otherwise, yeah, this change order is just kind of zero out the project, so everything balances at the end of it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number two, also on the North Walnut Creek bank stabilization, which is releasing the five percent retainage and finalizing the project. Motion to approve.
Removed.
Second.
Next question.
Can we just go over quickly? I don't really have the information in front of me as to what the pay request number two is.
It's just the, it's a release of the five percent retainage. So everything was paid out. We're just keeping, giving the contractor back the money we held back since he finished it.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Mike. Yes.
Yes.
Next item is council reports. Teresa, would you like to lead off?
Well, you're going to take me out of my sink. This doesn't ever happen. What's the special occasion, Dave?
I just decided to go from the other side of the dais and work my way back the other way tonight.
Wow. Um, three years later, three years in the making. Um, okay, so sure, Public Safety Committee met on the twenty-eighth of, of September. Chad gave a budget and staffing overview. Our next meeting is October twentieth. We are having folks get in and either view the facilities or do ride-alongs if appropriate, if they haven't done that, as well as taking a look at our proposed emergency response plan at our next meeting. Polk County Emergency Manager AJ Mum will be in to, or be online or in, or whatever is our mode of meeting to give a presentation, and then for us to talk about emergency preparedness, plan specific for the city, so those are our next steps, and our committee is, we're fully I don't want to say staffed, that's not the word. We've got all of our people, and so we're up and running and back in business, so thanks, Chad, that I and, and Joseph Jones, if I missed anything, please add. And then at some time, point in time before we're done this evening, if somebody could provide an update real quick on Allison and College, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Mike Jones.
We have a Public Works committee meeting on the eighth at ten o'clock. And after that, updates will follow.
Michael Lefredo.
Yeah, I would just. Yeah, I would just report on a email I got from Whitney today. She has finished the welcome cards and sent them through the end of September. So she's all cut up, and there's a lengthy list of new residents for that third quarter.
That's it.
We have a dark commission meeting tomorrow. You may have seen the notice I forwarded you about the new electric bus, and you've probably seen stories about that, so we're excited about the seven of those to be added to the fleet. And then we're doing a movie in the park on Friday, another socially distance movie in the park. It'll be Hocus Pocus at sunset, so it should be around six forty-five or so.
I have nothing, but I'll back up to kind of what Joseph Jones said about the movie in the park. If anybody would like to sponsor the drinks or the pizza, feel free to get ahold of Joseph and/or myself. We're looking for a sponsor for the pizza, so, and the drinks maybe also. So if anybody would like to sponsor it, give us a holler.
Dennis?
Nothing from my perspective, but Justin or Dalton, could you jump in and talk to the Allison project?
Yes, this is Justin. Allison, they're plugging away with the storm sewer. We're probably looking at a couple of weeks here, maybe end of the next week possibly, to start the roadwork. The college, they have that stage two rocked. They completed that later, earlier this morning. They're setting string line up, probably looking at paving here the middle of the week. And then from stage two, they'll be grading on stage three here probably tomorrow, and then hopefully rocking it by the end of the week as well. And then it'll just, all the equipment will move from stage two to stage three.
Justin, what's the, the projected completion date? For college?
I think it was, well, to get paving done, it was before Thanksgiving. So they're, they're looking at tentative start date on that, the twenty, the week of the twenty-sixth. So that one doesn't have nearly as much pipe work, so it should go a little quicker, as long as the weather cooperates. So we're hoping to get that paved by Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And Justin, that's just through stage three, or is that inclusive of stage four?
That's inclusive stage four. They're looking to start the twenty-sixth on that phase. So everything stage two and stage three should be, you know, the street should be poured within the next, you know, stage two this week, and then possibly more likely stage three, the week of the twelfth. So the key is there, we have to get that Lu and Lane opened up, because we can't block those people off. So once that's kind of opened up and ready to rock, people can get out that way, then we'll tackle stage four.
It seems or appears as though either the newer timelines that were distributed a couple of weeks ago are pretty on par, or that we really have caught up and things seem to be moving along a little bit smoother than they previously did. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think just the weather, we haven't, you know, that week of rain kind of pushed us back a little bit, but after that, it's been smooth sailing, except for rain on Saturday kind of held them back, but we're going to finish Saturday. But yeah, everything's kind of been no hiccup so far.
Very good. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments that anyone would like to make?
Move to adjourn.
Excuse me, Teresa, what?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerrys.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Folks, have a good evening.
Right.
Good night.